Good evening, I'd like to call the order of the St. Charles City Council meeting for Monday, April 18, 2022. Nancy, please call the roll.
Okay.
Here.
Fala?
Here.
Paylightner?
Here.
Van Gert?
Here.
Bancroft?
Here.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Patrulla?
Here.
Werbe?
Here.
Bezner?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Thank you. Tonight's invocation will be given by Rita Paylightner.
This past weekend, we celebrated Passover and Easter, along with a reminder that no matter what our experience, there's always hope. We give thanks for the gift of hope in our lives, and as we face issues and make decisions for the people of our community, we seek wisdom to better serve and discern what is best for the people of St. Charles, and pray we have the courage to act accordingly. Amen.
We have special guests this evening that are going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, so we have Daisy Brownie, Trup 574. Did you want to come up and lead the pledge? Yes? Practice that, Ken. Okay. Then, you want to face the flag? And whenever you're ready, girls, you get a start, and everybody else will follow you, okay? Go ahead. Good job. Thank you. Okay, we have several presentations this evening. The first one, we have several Youth Commission members here tonight. Thank you for joining us. And I know Dan Kelly and Jamie Muniz will be leading this presentation, so, or Jamie Muns, I apologize, I got that wrong. Come on up to the podium.
Good evening. On behalf of my fellow Youth Commissioners, I wanted to thank you for the opportunity, Mayor, members of the City Council. We are very excited. Under Jamie's leadership and our dedicated commissioners, we've had another fantastic year. We'll speak more to that in May, but tonight, we're really privileged. We have two St. Charles youth that have gone above and beyond, and we're going to recognize both of them. If this is what the future holds for St. Charles, we're in very, very good shape. So first, I'd like to call Maxwell. Max Burkhoff, he's a fifth grader at St. Peter's, and on his own initiative, he started a drive for the homeless this winter, collecting socks, hand warmers, anything to keep the less privileged warm. It's unbelievable that he took this on his own. On behalf of the Youth Commission, we're excited to award you an Impact Award. Keep up the great work. Our second recipient is Callie Ramirez. Callie is a freshman at St. Charles East High School. She is a student member of the Natural Resources Commission. On her own initiative, she started a Friends of the Fox River Helper Group, and the thousands of pounds of garbage that they have retrieved out of the river, as well as the hundreds of service hours generated by volunteers, this was something Kathy, or Callie, excuse me, initiated on her own. That resulted in her becoming the youngest citizen recipient for the, was it the Natural, the King County Forest? Youngest ever. So kudos to you, and thank you for all you do. Callie and Max, can you come up one more time if we'll get a quick photo?
You're welcome. On behalf of City Council, we'd like to congratulate you again for setting a good example for the youth in St. Charles. So thank you, Youth Commission, Dan, Jamie, for all you do, and Laura, and I think there's some other members here. Thank you for everything you do for our community. Thanks. Okay, we have two proclamations this evening, and the first one is for Arbor Day. And so Arbor Day is celebrated on April 30th here in St. Charles. We have activities at Potawatomi Park. We encourage you all to attend those activities. The Arbor Day 2022 proclamation reads, 2022 proclamation reads as follows: Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Laura Vittek, Mayor of the City of St. Charles, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2022, as Arbor Day in the City of St. Charles, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees and care for trees, to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. This is something that the Natural Resources Commission works on. I think we have some members here today. Yes, Tom? Okay. Here we go. So I will give you the proclamation to give back to the group. And I just want to thank you for all the work you do, Tom, and for all those on your commission, the work you do in the community. Sure. Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Okay, this is a very important week for municipalities, and specifically ours, because it is Public Service Recognition Week, and we have a proclamation for that. This is very important because all the individuals we see over there work very hard on behalf of the City of St. Charles, and so do their staff. And many of them work countless hours that are beyond the hours we work in our maybe traditional jobs. So I do want to thank them, all of the directors here, and please pass along the thanks. Please just raise your hands, so everyone in the community knows who directors are. These are the people that run our city, that make sure everything happens the way it should happen, you're safe, your roads are plowed when need be, most of the time. And I just want to say from the City Council and myself, thank you for all you do. We appreciate it. In honor of the millions of public employees at the federal, state, county, and city levels, whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. And whereas public employees take not only jobs, but oaths, and whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, electric line workers, water and wastewater staff, public service laborers, healthcare professionals, and others risk their lives each day in service to the people of St. Charles, Illinois, the United States, and around the world. And whereas public servants include safety inspectors, arborists, computer technicians, community services officers, meter readers, crossing guards, accountants, administrative assistants, civil engineers, record specialists, community planners, storekeepers, electric line workers, mechanics, and countless other occupations. Day in and day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity. Whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Therefore, I, Laura Vittek, Mayor of the City of St. Charles, do hereby announce and proclaim to all citizens that May 1st through May 7, 2022, is Public Service Recognition Week. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city. So I'd just like to ask everyone that's here in the community today to please give the public servants, those that serve our community, a round of applause. Okay, now I welcome Chief Flanson to the podium over there. Please, yes. This is a very special day for firefighters. Thank you all for being here today. I know that this is, Chief is going to discuss the results, but I know these are long-awaited results for ISO ratings. So I want to appreciate all the work you do, and the floor is yours.
Yeah, we'd just like to, once again, state that we were able to achieve the ISO Class I rating, which is the highest rating you could get. ISO is the insurance services organization. It's an independent group that works with the insurance industry, and they come out and rate fire protection in every community in the entire country. Again, ISO Class I is the best you could get. We first achieved that in 2015. We were the fourth in the state of Illinois to do that. Currently, we're one of 27 now, but that still puts us in the top 1%. And along with accreditation on top of that, which some of you people are going to help us out with the strategic plan coming up, we're one of only five in the state of Illinois that's accredited and ISO I. So we're kind of trying to meet the highest standards possible. What ISO does is they rate everything with fire protection. It's not just the fire department. We couldn't achieve it without TRICOM, because we have to have communications. If we don't know there's a fire, we can't respond. And we also have to thank public works, because without the water system that they work hard to maintain, we couldn't have water to put out the fires. So they're involved in it as well. We scored very well, 94.4 points. Like I said, we're in the top five in the state, being credited and ISO, and I'm one of only 114 in the entire nation. So I would like to thank the city for the support of the fire department and all the departments within the city, because you really do have a really good city, and it really does function very well. But I'd also like to thank all the members, because without the firefighters and the officers of the department, nothing would get done. So I'm just the chief. They do the work. So with that, I'd like to present a plaque recognizing this as ISO Class I, Mayor Lightner.
Thank you very much. I'd like to again thank you all for the work you do, day in and day out, and as Chief said, you know, we couldn't do without all of you. So on behalf of the City Council, thank you for keeping us up in that high rating. Appreciate it. Thank you. And it's your turn. It's the omnibus vote, Tab Bancroft.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the omnibus vote as reflected on the St. Charles City Council meeting, Monday, April 18, 2022 agenda.
Weber will second.
Move by Bancroft, seconded by Weber. Do I have any questions up here? Nancy, please call the roll. Fala?
Yes.
Paylightner?
Yes.
Van Gert?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Patrulla?
Yes.
Werbe?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Skokidis?
Yes.
Thank you. There is not any old business this evening, new business. The first two items will be led by Finance Director Bill Hannah. A is a recommendation to approve an ordinance amending Title 13 Public Utilities, Chapter 13.12 Sewers of the St. Charles Municipal Code to allow for changes in the rate structure for the sewer utility.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The first ordinance before this evening is an ordinance recommending a 5% increase in the sewer rates effective for sewer bills issued after June 1, 2022. Incorporated in this ordinance is also an increase in EPA monthly compliance fee, effective June 1 as well. This increase is part based on the recommendations of the 2019 Water and Sewer Rate Study discussed at previous budget workshops and presentations. Funds from the increase will be used to ensure timely repayment on loans and bonds issued to fund critical capital improvements over the last year and coming years as well. It is also important to maintain adequate debt service coverage on our bonds, and we have a responsibility to ensure an adequate fund structure and revenue structure for the IEPA loan commitments. I'm happy to answer any questions tonight. Again, this has been discussed previously at the Government Operations Committee.
Do you have any questions? Yeah, Rita.
Oh, along with the budget we discussed.
Along with the budget, I mean, yes.
Yeah, right, right, right. So kind of got lost in the shuffle. Could I ask a question about both A and B real quick? It could be combined answer. What was the percentage of the last increase we had that was in 19, I think? Do you know?
Last year, there was a roughly nine, well, 5% increase in the sewer rate, and 9%, roughly 9% for water.
Last year or in 2019?
2019, I believe it was just under 9% for water, and I'd have to check on the sewer for you.
Okay. We recently got ARPA funds, correct, and that goes towards sewer infrastructure?
Correct. It was determined the best use of those funds was to fund some of the sewer infrastructure projects.
Okay. And, help me with this. The ARPA funds were some sort of a COVID relief fund, correct? Is that what they were intended for?
They were issued to fund a variety of purposes, and I think based on some of the discussions we had, you know, it was decided, given the totality of all the infrastructure projects that we had related to sewer, that the recommendation after discussion was to dedicate those funds for sewer infrastructure projects.
Right. No, I understand that. I'm just wondering, what was the intent of ARPA funds at this time? It was for COVID relief, correct?
There were a variety of purposes associated with the issue of those. Too many to list tonight.
Oh, okay.
Funding infrastructure projects related to sewer and water was one of the allowed uses of the ARPA funds.
Okay. Okay. I was on the assumption ARPA funds were because of COVID, you know, that was kind of helping municipalities and their citizens out because of the COVID, you know, ramifications. And because of that, I kind of think that, I don't know, I understand the purpose of it, and I'm hoping that we're going to get our promised talking points, because, you know, those were promised to us. For when we have to answer questions as for the relief, back at our workshop, we got, we're told we'd get some talking points. I just, I'm, when we got 4.4 million to help offer relief, and then we're charging 12 and what was the other? 12% on the?
12% for water and 5% for sewer.
Yeah. That doesn't seem like we're, you know, trickling down that relief.
If I could help assist a little bit on that question. We did get some excess funds from the ARPA funds. I think the point that we may be missing a little bit is that the rate that we're suggesting this evening is to make up for the previous two years that we were not following our own rate study based on our existing debt models and based on our existing needs. That additional money that we received in ARPA is going to that system still, but it will help offset future debt issuance that we will need. We still have an aging infrastructure that we are going to need to address significantly, so we are going to use that so that we can reduce the amount that will, in the future, impact what we're trying to right now correct for the previous rates that we need to effectuate all of our payments on our bonds and additional infrastructure.
Good. Interesting, Heather, if you don't mind. Also, at that workshop, we were told that maybe we're going to have some discussion, that maybe this isn't the best way to handle infrastructure. Was that, I thought that I saw that in our minutes, that maybe we, in the future, should discuss another way to, yeah, budget, we mentioned, ongoing analysis will be done to determine if rate increase recommendations are sufficient to finance needed capital improvements.
Correct. And that's the intent, to go towards more of that pay-as-you-go model and really limit or strategically decide when to bond out on some of the infrastructure, and that additional ARPA funds will go towards helping that model. But this is going to be an ongoing, every-year analysis, and is going to take a significant amount of time to really come up with that new modeling system.
Okay. I know that I've heard from, I know some of my colleagues have heard from, you know, fixed income and water. You know, it's not a whole lot you can do to curb your water usage. And, do you know, again, maybe, Bill and Heather, one last question, I promise, is how do we compare with other communities on this?
When the rate study was done in 2020, our rates were on the lower third of the water system rates. We were just above Batavia at that point, and well below Geneva.
Okay, so we haven't done one since then?
No, that was, and we're just trying to get back in place with that rate study analyzed based on our existing debt modeling and our existing infrastructure needs.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, I've read the numbers, the records, I just need a motion.
Weber will second.
Move by Lencioni, seconded by Weber. Nancy, please call the roll. Fala?
Yes.
Paylightner?
Yes.
Van Gert?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Patrulla?
Yes.
Werbe?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Skokidis?
Yes.
Thank you. Item B, your recommendation to approve an ordinance amending Title 13 Public Utilities, Chapter 13.16 Water of the St. Charles Municipal Code to allow for changes in the rate structure for the water utility.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second ordinance implementing the 12% increase in water rates as laid out in the Water Sewer Rate Study from 2019, and as we touched on previously. One thing I did want to note with this, I know Heather already mentioned the catch-up, the 1.5% additional for the rate increase that wasn't implemented in the prior year. And also, I just wanted to note that there is no recommendation for any increase in electric rates for the upcoming fiscal year. So if you look at all three utilities together, we're looking probably about a 4% increase in total between all three utilities combined, or roughly about $10 a month for the typical customer.
Any questions?
Any questions? Yes.
Yes, Brian.
People that, let's say, are in need of help with their utilities, this would fall under that, let's say, if they need help with their water bill or something like that? Is that?
Yeah, we have a sharing program people can donate money to. There's also resources out there, various nonprofits that could probably provide assistance as well.
And then, how do we advertise that to people that are in need? Is there, do we just have it on our website, or is it on the utility billing? I know we're going to talk about utility billing later.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure where it's located, but if there's need to push that information out, we can look at doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, looking for a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move by Bancroft, seconded by Bezner. Nancy, please call the roll. Fala?
Yes.
Paylightner?
Yes.
Van Gert?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Patrulla?
Yes.
Werbe?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Skokidis?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C, a recommendation to approve resolution for the one-year contract and lease agreement with AID Association for Individual Development Chief.
Good evening, members of City Council. This is the eighth year we've had a contract with AID Associates in Development. This contract runs for one year from our fiscal beginning, May 1 through April 30. There's also a lease where the AID staff is allowed to use our police department facilities for the, it's a dollar lease, but it's a goodwill gesture. This is a 24/7 crisis line operation where officers, firefighters, and city staff can contact AID 24 hours a day. We also have a social worker staff full-time at our police facility, 40 hours per week. We did write in a 30-day notice to terminate this contract. This is a very competitive market for social work in 2022. We've had some movement in this regard. We are changing our invoicing. We're going to invoice four times a year with the installments that I noted in my memo. Once again, this is a budget expense, but we have applied for 708 grant funding from the 708 Board. We testified in front of that board last week, and we should have notice in the next 30 to 60 days. With that, I can answer any questions that the council might have.
Any questions? Looking for a motion.
Second.
Move by Van Gert, seconded by Bancroft. Nancy, please call the roll. Fala?
Yes.
Paylightner?
Yes.
Van Gert?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Patrulla?
Yes.
Werbe?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Skokidis?
Yes.
Following items, the next three came from Liquor Commission earlier this evening. Item D is a recommendation to approve a proposal for a new C1 liquor license application for SDMC Enterprises doing business at the Beach Hut located at 8 North Third Street, St. Charles, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. So these next three, because of timeliness, had to come forward to the City Council, whereas the other items are following our typical practice in committee. This particular item is an asset sale, and they would like to transfer ownership for the main one fiscal year. So the proprietor and petitioner also own and operate our bar on Main Street, as well as St. Charles Motor Cars on the far east side of St. Charles near the old Pheasant Run facility. It's an asset sale from Dawn Humor from Dawn's Beach Hut. Their DBA name is going to be The Beach Hut. It was filed earlier today. They are asking for a 2:00 AM late-night permit. Brian is here, from the ownership group, and it did advance forward from Liquor Commission earlier this evening for the 4-0 recommendation. Either Brian or myself can answer any questions that the committee, or, excuse me, the council might have.
Any questions? Okay, looking for a motion.
Weber will second.
Move by Lencioni, seconded by Weber. Nancy, please call the roll. Fala?
Yes.
Paylightner?
Yes.
Van Gert?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Patrulla?
Yes.
Werbe?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Skokidis?
Yes.
Thank you. Item E, a recommendation to approve the renewal of a 1:00 AM late-night permit for St. Charles stores doing business at Spotted Fox Ale House, 3615 East Main Street, St. Charles, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. So I did take all of these in March, like I typically do, to both Liquor Commission, then Committee, and on the City Council. This particular business, there were some delays in some of their paperwork. We, they're in compliance as of this past Friday, so I'm advancing this forward this evening for council action. It's a 1:00 AM permit for the Spotted Fox on the far east side of St. Charles. I can answer any questions that the council might have.
Any council members have questions? Okay, looking for a motion.
So move. Second.
Move by Werbe, seconded by Bezner. Nancy, please call the roll. Fala?
Yes.
Paylightner?
Yes.
Van Gert?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Patrulla?
Yes.
Werbe?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Skokidis?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F, a recommendation to approve a 2:00 AM late-night permit for Yummy Place Burrito Los Apoderos, Inc., located at 2400 East Main Street, Unit 112.
Thank you, Mayor. So in processing renewals this past year, staff discovered that this particular establishment would like to stay open until 2:00 AM. They have food sales till 2:00 AM, and they also have a video gaming license. The state code, as well as our local code, says that alcohol service must be in conjunction with video gaming. So in other words, they can't offer food sales, be open as a liquor establishment, and offer video gaming without liquor sales. We don't anticipate liquor sales, or much liquor sales, to take place between the hours of midnight and 2:00 AM. It's been open for a couple of years now. This is the old Ace Salute, near Fox, excuse me, near Dunham and East Main. With that, the petitioner, I believe is here, she's in the back of the room. Either the petitioner or myself can answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, any questions from council? Okay, if not, I'm looking for a motion.
So move. Weber will second.
Move by Werbe, seconded by Weber. Nancy, please call the roll. Fala?
Yes.
Paylightner?
Yes.
Van Gert?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Patrulla?
Yes.
Werbe?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Skokidis?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief. Committee reports, Government Operations, Mr. Skokidis, anything further?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Government Services, Mr. Bezner, anything further?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Planning and Development, Mr. Weber, yours.
Yes, I have five items that we need to discuss, C5, C8, C9, C10, and C11. Go ahead, Mr. Byne.
I'd like the record show that I'll be recusing myself for items 8, 9, and 10.
8, 9, and 10. Thank you. All right, so for C5, looking for a motion, a second, to approve the, an ordinance granting approval of MAP Amendment Special Use for Planned Unit Development, and PUD Preliminary Plan for 1023 West Main Street redevelopment.
Yep.
Before we motion, I just want to, just a quick comment, quick question as well. First, I still don't support this, as I didn't in Committee last week. Just want to echo the safety concerns that were brought up, and in light of some additional constituent communication that we've received, actually, one specifically referencing an issue about a curb, the curb, and a lack thereof, as well as our engineering reports, traffic study that actually references that there's an issue with there being no barrier. I would like to offer to my colleagues on the council to amend this to include a barrier, so that we can protect any pedestrians walking on the sidewalk, perhaps a 12-inch curb. I would like to open that up for discussion before we vote.
Would Stan like to come up?
Yes, good evening. There was a traffic study that was submitted as part of the project that was reviewed by our traffic engineer, HLR Engineering, and they did provide a comment that they had a safety concern with pedestrians utilizing the sidewalk, and there not being any kind of separation between the sidewalk and the circulation on-site for the gas station. And this comment was shared with the applicant, and I believe they had a concern with having a separation or fence placed between the sidewalk and the gas station. And I believe the applicant is present tonight, can perhaps speak to that.
Okay.
To the record, my name is Muhammad Ali. So the safety concerns, what we have, the news, the city worked diligently with us. We thank the city for coming up with the viable plan there. With the new stuff coming in, we'll have more light within the curbs around there, and the structure will be more narrower. The lanes on both 11th Street will be more narrower. So it will have a more structured walkway as such. The reason we didn't want to put a separation in there is basically if the The reason we didn't want to put a separation there is basically if the traffic comes in and it could knock off the entire stuff out, then it will even more than repaired and stuff like that. The intersection will be new without any accidents so far in the last N number of years the gas station was there. The safety is minimum right now, and still it's cruising along fine. And with the new stuff coming in, it'll be more ample light, more defined structure, narrower access to the gas station, it will be more refined. So I don't think that will be a matter of concern, but if the city council has it, no doubt.
Yes, Mr. Werbe.
So I think the question is, the sidewalk and then the north side pumps, when someone pulls in, you've got three pumps now. If someone's boxed in in the middle pump, the engineering report states that there might be some maneuver issues, somebody trying to get out, and there's nothing to prevent them from driving on the sidewalk to maneuver their car out. And there's a lot of kids that walk that sidewalk to go to Thompson School, Thompson Middle School. So I think the concern is, or maybe the solution would be a curb in between the sidewalk and your pavement, nothing dramatic, but just a curb to prevent cars from inadvertently going onto the sidewalk. I think that's what we're looking to do.
So you want kind of like a picket fence and stuff like?
No, no picket fence, just a curb, like maybe a ten-inch curb, just like a bump to prevent cars from inadvertently going on to the sidewalk. My understanding is you're going to replace the sidewalk anyways, is that correct?
Patches of the sidewalk will be replaced. I'm not sure to what extent the engineering team can be there. But certainly because the new curb cuts are going to narrow the entry on Eleventh Street as well as on the other two sides on the Main Street, so that would probably alleviate the problem. There won't be any more problem in there.
But, but I'm not talking about, it's only on Main Street. I'm not talking about Eleventh Street. So when a car is parked filling up with gasoline, you have three pumps now. The car in the center, if the first one and second one are stuck there and they're not coming out, the person in the middle wants to leave, it, the engineering report cites concerns about maneuvering out of there. There's nothing to prevent them from going on to the sidewalk, is my point. That's why we're kind of thinking, just a curb, concrete curb, if you're going to do the sidewalks, why not put a concrete curb there to prevent that from happening?
We can come up with some plantations in there, because we didn't want, we don't want a permanent curb in there, right? We can put some plantation and stuff like that if that's the case, or we can put some pickets in there. We can come up with the city and try to maneuver that out. If that's the concern you guys have, we can certainly come with that out.
My name is Sarah, drawing on DC Architects. I think, let me just make sure I'm hearing what you're saying and we understand at the same time. I think what you're asking for, so right now, the, yes, the sidewalk's being replaced. There's a curb between North Avenue and the sidewalk, which wasn't, isn't really there now.
Right.
That we have defined in and out, right? And that's approved at all. So I think what you're asking for is maybe like a normal six-inch tall by?
Exactly.
Six-inch curb. So basically, if this was the sidewalk and this was the road, or the sidewalk in the parking lot, it would be a concrete division. So how do you feel about that? It doesn't need, you're not having some lamping.
No, 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 no.
Something like that, you're not taking up a lot of room.
Right.
I don't know.
Yeah.
So theoretically, hypothetically, this would only prevent the middle car from crossing over the sidewalk. The other two curb cuts, they're going to go over the sidewalk, right? So this is literally?
Well, they're going to be pulling out the lead or pulling to come in.
Right. So this is literally just for the middle, that middle car?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if it's going to be a issue that much.
Perhaps, I think perhaps also the last car too, because if there's three cars in a row, the last car might have a, you know, have the desire to leave and go out into the, try to overtake the other two.
There is space between, one car can, even if the three cars are aligned on both the sides of the phone, there is space, they can back out and straight away go in, go out without going on to the sidewalk. There is space in there, like, on both sides. And.
I have a question for the architects and staff. If this is amended to be such, does this solve a problem or does it, is there not really a problem that exists? I'm just curious.
From our standpoint of view, it doesn't solve the problem what the problem was, because ours is not a very high-traffic gas station, it's just a neighborhood gas station. And we have not experienced any traffic congestion in that gas station in the last several years what have been running there, two pumps.
And, sorry.
And no accidents so far in that space.
Yeah, our traffic engineers thought some kind of separation would be an improvement to safety, so something like a curb that's being discussed would accomplish that.
Okay, thank you.
You know, it's funny, because I think about all this and where we were without kids, but I also remember being a kid and jumping over that fence to go to Dairy Queen. I also remember going in there to get, you know, drinks and whatever. I mean, I, you know, went to Hanes, you know, played sports there, played baseball forever. I don't even see, like, I mean, this feels like make-believe to me. Like, I mean, if you could put like a couple of flowers up, that'd be fine, but it's already a small site. I think a curb is going to potentially, you know, cause people to not notice or to car. You've got people walking in and out of the sites because people are filling up their car, going in, you know. I just, I don't think that this is real, and I gotta tell you, I just, I think it's asking, I think it's asking, you know, a business owner, property owner, who's trying to do the right thing for something that I don't know is really going to help them or really addresses something.
Thank you. My question is to the two aldermen that are bringing this up. If this is something that's done, does that change your vote?
I'm still, as odd as it is going to sound, I still don't agree with the project, but I think if we can, if I can get a curb, I think that would be positive.
Okay, so.
I'm going to, I'm going to motion to, I'm going to ask for a second, I'm moving, I'm going to ask for a second to approve this ordinance.
Thank you.
Weber will second.
Move by Weber, second by Lencioni, any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. Our traffic study guys say, yeah, we need this, so if I?
I didn't hear, I need this, I hear it would be an improvement, but I didn't hear I, we need this.
Yeah, they felt it would be a safety improvement.
A safety improvement, sounds like a need to me, yeah.
And if I could add, sorry, and I appreciate everything you're saying, I completely get it, I understand what Paul's saying too. I'm just, I have the information in front of me, I have a professional traffic organization telling me that there's a safety concern. I, as the alderman for that ward and having many constituents reach out to me and having, knowing that children are walking by, I, I just, I feel compelled to say something. And so that's the reason I brought this up, so.
If you really think, if the city council really thinks that a curb will suffice the problem, we can work with the city and come up with a curb or some kind of separation. But the sidewalk on Main Street is pretty tight, and if you add a curb, it's going to still narrow the entire sidewalk down, so that's.
Yeah, it's not, we're not looking for a massive curb, just something to, and that's fine.
We can work with this, and we can certainly come up with it.
Yes, thank you. I think so, in the, in good faith, that, you know, we're working with you, and I know Russ is very responsible and will work on behalf of the city, make sure it is a safe site. I would hope that the three of you could work together to come up with some sort of compromise, just to make sure that the site is safe, if this does pass, in fact, this evening.
Certainly will come back.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Yes, Mr. Bongar.
Did we have, when we had a third pump prior to the location, did we have traffic and safety concerns happening, you know, quite often?
No, not that I'm aware of.
So I'm just, why do we now think if we have a third pump, we're naturally going to have safety concerns? If I may answer that.
I would say, and I'd ask this of the?
Because we have something, you have an opportunity now to fix a problem. But you don't have a problem with it. But we never did studies back then when that was built. We have an oppo, we have an opportunity to increase safety, that's all, at minimal cost. This is not like we're changing the whole project, we're just asking, there, we are, well, some of us on the council are asking for just a curb between the two, between the exit and the entrance, that's all. We're not asking for anything drastic. The developer seems to be willing to work with them to do it. I don't see a problem with adding it. Seems like a simple solution. And our, our engineering recommends it, so I'd, I mean, we have an opportunity to fix something. I was looking more at the pump question, not the curb issue. Yeah. I, I'm sorry, I'm talking more about the third pump versus two pumps.
I think the pump in two thousand eleven, two thousand fifteen, it was, it was a fail-safe pump. It was thirty-seven feet from one end to the other. Now it's fifty-two feet, so they're true, three working pumps now, if you would go